I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of July 10, 2024. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff's cellphones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action is final on the following items. 1.1B Preliminary plat 24004, 1.2 Special Permit 224023. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all today's items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held June 26, 2024.
So move Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Abstain.
Joy?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Item 1.1A Change of Zone 24016 for Diamond Enterprises from H3 Highway Commercial to I1 Industrial on property generally located at 3501 West O Street, associated with Item 1.1B Preliminary plat 24004 to plat 3 Lots as part of the Diamond Enterprises, a proposed commercial and industrial subdivision, also on property generally located at 3501 West O Street. And this is final action. Item 1.2 Special Permit 24023 to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption both on and off the premises on property generally located at 2200 Wildcat Drive. And this is final action. Item 1.3 Text Amendment 24008 to amend a Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.02.020 definitions to modify the definition of academies by adding additional clarification for different types of academies within the definition and additional language related to events and performance associated with academics. Item 1.4 Miscellaneous 24004 to reclassify Northwest 27th Street north of Purple Heart Highway from Collector to Minor Arterial in the City of Lincoln Access Management Policy. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No, there is not.
If there is anyone wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
We will entertain a motion.
Seeing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byte?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to a staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, these are on continued public hearing and action. Item 5.1A Annexation 24001 to annex approximately 37.43 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, associated with 5.1B Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24001 to amend the future land use plan of the Lincoln Lancaster County 2015 Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from urban density residential to commercial on property located at the northeast corner of South 84th and Van Dorn Streets, associated with Item 5.1C Change of Zone 24001 from AG Agricultural District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business over approximately 37.43 acres, also on property generally located at the northeast corner of South 84th and Van Dorn Streets. And associated item 5.1D Use Permit 24001 to allow up to 175,000 square feet of commercial floor area and up to 100-room hotel with waivers to setbacks, high block length and lighting design standards, also on property generally located at the northeast corner of South 84th and Van Dorn Streets. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on these applications?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of the site to be disclosed?
No, there are not.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. So as Shelley just noted, there are four associated applications. Let me just run through each one of them quickly and hit the high points. So make sure everybody is aware of where we're talking about. This area that's crosshatched here, northeast of the intersection of 80th and Van Dorn, 84th and South 84th and Van Dorn, approximately 38 acres. The requests are to modify the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, annex it, rezone it, and then approve a use permit. And so maybe the best place to start is just looking at the overall picture here. So the property we're talking about is this 38 acres here. You can see that it's surrounded by city limit on three sides. However, this parcel and that to the north extending back to the east is still zoned AG and unannexed. So the first request is to modify the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. And this sort of half circle that's shown here, here's the subject property, by the way, this sort of half circle here, I think that was added back prior to the recession 2008. And it was a best guess at the time of where retail development was considering locating at that time. And here again, the comprehensive plan talks about these not being firm set in stone locations, but rather approximate and best locations. So the request here today is about this 17 acres of property designated for residential land use on the south end to then redesignate it fully to commercial. And so with a commercial land use designation over the property, it would then be suitable for rezoning and commercial development. And so the zoning application, the associated change of zone application then is to rezone the subject property to B2. And as we look at the larger, the larger section here, there is no other commercial center currently within this square mile. Now, there is a designation for perhaps another neighborhood center at the east side of the square mile, but it has not been developed yet. And so the comprehensive plan talks about neighborhood centers and locations like this within the square mile to serve the residential development within it as being appropriate. And so the change of zone application is to rezone the property from AG to B2. And B2 zoning would be appropriate zoning for a neighborhood commercial center. And at this location, that would be appropriate. Now, as I mentioned earlier with this map, the property has not been annexed. So for any of this happens, this property is going to need to be annexed in the City of Lincoln in order to receive services, be rezoned, et cetera. So with respect to the city's annexation policy and the comprehensive plan, it's surrounded on three sides by develop or developed or developing areas and the city limit. All the utilities can be provided to serve the property. And so it meets every criteria within the comprehensive plan for annexation, and this is a voluntary request. City can provide services, and so of course, the recommendation on that application would be for approval. So with the redesignated land, with the new designation, land use designation, annexing the property and rezoning the B2, that would then all set the stage for the associated use permit. And then this is the site plan with the associated use permit. It's showing approximately 175,000 square feet of floor area. It's showing a mix of commercial uses. There is one larger box being shown on the site plan. We have street connections being made to the north and to the east. There is connection to an existing roundabout in Van Dorn Street to the south. There's also a connection to South 84th Street, Carl Ridge Road. That intersection is going to be improved, is going to have some improvements, some additional turn lanes and turn signals. It's going to be a primary, one of the primary entrances into the development. I'd note that this site plan shows a right-in, right-out entrance here to the development. And so I'll be honest, so this has been delayed a couple of times coming to the Planning Commission. And it really wasn't the substance of the use permit itself or the other applications, rather, it was discussion about traffic improvements in Van Dorn and South 84th Street. And as you look at the staff reports, there is, there are conditions with two of them, and that is with the annexation and then the use permit. The annexation has a condition that the owner will enter into an annexation agreement. Now, that of course doesn't come to the Planning Commission, but this will not advance the City Council until that's been drafted and signed by the owner. The other, there are conditions associated with the use permit, and I guess I would describe those as fairly minor in nature with the exception, one of them is to delete this right-in, right-out off of South 84th Street. And this is one of the items of discussion. The applicant has agreed that will be deleted from the site plan. And associated with that, then, there will be no turn lane improvements that are associated in South 84th and Van Dorn Street. So there's three waivers that are requested with this. Setbacks internal to development, and you know, those are pretty typical. Also lighting design standards so that lighting that may cross lot lines internally to development doesn't exceed standards, that is also a typical waiver. And then also the block length, but that's due to the nature of this commercial development like this and the street network that is shown. And so the Planning Department is recommending approval of all three of those. So all four applications taken together, subject to the two conditions, or the two recommendations for conditional approval with the annexation and the use permit, the Planning Department is recommending approval of all. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Dick?
Brian, in reading through this, there was some discussion about fees that are collected from developers applying to some of the improvements for access and others to be at the developer's expense. Can you point out which ones are which?
Well, okay, so the improvements up here at Carl Ridge, some of those, some of those improvements are impact fee eligible and will be reimbursable. The amount that isn't, the developers agree to pay for that. That's a desirable intersection and will serve this development primarily, so the developers agree to cover that cost.
And what about the right-in, right-outs?
That one is going away.
The most northern one?
Yes, that is being deleted from the site.
But the south one would still stay?
There is no, you mean that at the roundabout off of Van Dorn Street?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was reading that there were two there.
Yes, so things have changed a little bit over time.
Okay.
So let's, yeah, using, using this site plan on the overhead, this is, this is the only access point other than Carl Ridge Road shown on South 84th, but that is being deleted.
Okay, and then on the, the roundabout's already in.
Yes.
So there really is very little improvement to that.
Right, and yeah, whatever, and so whatever improvements they'll need to make in order to connect to that, the access to development, of course, they'll, they'll make.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just make a comment.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Brian, for pulling your microphone closer to you. It was wonderful. I appreciate it. I could hear you very well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Most really don't care to hear me, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Testimony from the applicant.
I've got several maps I want to make sure I've got in order, ready for you.
And would you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All two, it doesn't help.
Does this work?
Yeah.
All right, it's great. All right, good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rembold-Ludke. I'm here today on behalf of the developer Firefox Properties in this case. So first, I want to start with, you know, as Brian did, an introduction of the property. So I will say that I was excited when I got the call for this project. When I say the, when I say the northeast corner of 84th and Van Dorn, not everybody knows what I'm talking about, but if I say it's the Firefox Properties sign project, right, everybody knows what I'm talking about. Over the past, you know, 10 years being involved in development, I can't tell you how many times I've got the question, "I've seen that sign, do you know what's going in there?" And I had, I have absolutely no idea what's going in there. So I was very excited to finally know what's going in there, to be a part of this project. So this is the, let's see, the northeast corner of 84th and Van Dorn. This is owned by Firefox Properties LLC. As you can see, there's this sign that's been on this corner for at least 10 years, my client tells me 10 years, I was able to go in Google Maps to, back to 2019 to see this sign there. That, that sign has been here announcing a commercial development coming to this corner. So we're excited to move a step in that direction. All right. As Mr. Will noted, this property is almost, if I can work this, there we go, all right, almost completely surrounded by city limits. You can see this shows, this map shows a little bit better that the slightly darker shaded area here is city limits. Everything that is lighter is not city limits. So surrounded on three sides by city limits, really, it's also boarding on that South 84th Street, which is a major arterial with a federal designation. And then the east-west street is Van Dorn, which is a minor arterial. So this is prime for commercial development in that it's got that great frontage on those high-traffic streets. This is also surrounded by commercial uses. If we look, we've got another map somewhere here that shows this. Let's see, this one's a little far out. We'll get a little closer with this map. If you look here, we can see that this is Lincoln Federal Bank right here, right here we've got the commercial development. Here we've got a commercial strip mall surrounded by that apartment development, again apartments on the northwest corner of the intersection. Over here is where, this is the Wandering Creek Neighborhood. And you will also note that in between the Wandering Creek Neighborhood, the single-family residential, and this proposed development is this project right here. That's actually been permitted for apartments, really to provide that transition between commercial to apartments to that single-family residential. That's been permitted for apartments. My understanding that is that it's currently in the process of building and development. But, so it's a great, great way to just provide that transition from that commercial use onward. All right, and then finally, as was mentioned, that this is a property that under the current feature land use plan is shown as that mix of commercial and residential that we're requesting the entire area be redesignated for commercial. Again, as Mr. Will said, that this was put in, in the comprehensive plan, this is an idea, the best guess of what would be useful for this site. In this case, what we'd really note is that we've got that prime frontage corner with prime visibility at 84th and Van Dorn that we want to be able to utilize for that frontage for commercial space there. All right. So then finally, that's my overview of the project, the site itself, so now I want to move on to an overview of those four applications that are in front of you. And I want to start again by, as Mr. Will did, thanking you for your patience. He said this has been, this was on the public hearing agenda and has been delayed time and time again. So thank you for your patience as we worked through some of those last details, and thank you to the city staff for also working through those details with us so we can get to this, this point in the project. Just as a, being the first to an area, to, to develop an area presents challenges, being the last to an area also presents its own unique set of challenges that we've really had to work through with this project.
And before you go any further, would you go two maps back?
All right.
To where you were showing the apartment project? And once it comes up, I'll ask you a question.
It's a, oh, not on our screen. Yeah, sorry.
Not there yet.
All right.
We lost our screens.
Yeah.
Our screens went blank.
It's on that one.
There it is.
There we go.
All right.
The apartment ground is south of that connecting street, correct?
Um, let's see, I think we've got apartments here.
No, I'm, I mean, on the, on the properties of...
Are we talking about?
Yes. The whole area there?
Yes.
Is apartments on all three of those pieces around?
So yes.
Okay, that's what they need to do.
I will let Brian or Steve correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe this is all been approved for apartments north of 500 units.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, so as Mr. Will did, I will walk through our applications as he stated. The first, first up, we have an application for annexation. The comprehensive plan requires that in order to get higher density zoning, anything higher than AG, that we go through the annexation process. In this case, our advantage is that since it is surrounded on three sides by city limits, that means our essential utilities, sewer and water are already available in those arterial streets, giving at least that portion a little easier in the planning process. But, so we are asking that this be brought into city limits. As Mr. Will stated, there will be an annexation agreement associated with this as this moves in front of the City Council. Next is that change in future land use map, which we have already discussed, so I'll breeze past that. Next is our change in zone from, from AG to B2. The B2 district is that neighborhood retail district. So the intent of this district is for planned retail state, planned retail uses that, to serve surrounding neighborhoods. So that's where the intent is, the B2 district allows a wide variety of uses, everything from residential to retail-commercial. The idea being to really give that complete neighborhood feel that's supported by the resident, the comprehensive plan, and to integrate those retail uses with the surrounding community. That integration is key where the B2 district, in the B2 district, we're not allowed to make any use of the property until we get a use permit, which takes us to our next application. The idea being that with that wide variety of uses that is allowed in the B2 district, that needs to be well-planned to provide for just the cohesion of the community and with the surrounding area. So that takes us to our use permit for the B2 district. I have two different site plans. I have both the one that Mr. Will showed and then also a revised site plan to give you, now that we've been negotiating this for several, working through this for several weeks. So this is the original site plan as shown by Mr. Will. As he mentioned, what you're seeing here is that, oh, this is a request for a commercial development with 175,000 square feet of, of retail space and including 100-room hotel. You'll notice the major difference between this site plan and the next one that I'm going to show you as pointed out by Mr. Will, is that connection right here, that bobtail lane connection on 84th. That, that was a significant discussion point because as you can imagine, one of the... about how important that was to the development and why it took so long to finally get us to where we are today. Where we are today is that you will see, there is no, there is no right in, right out there. Ultimately, the reason being is that with discussions with LTU is that it was felt that that right in, right out would have a significant impact on the traffic patterns in the area, and so, it was agreed to remove that right in, right out to minimize impact on traffic in that area. Again, this is a unique project that in considering the, since we are last to the neighborhood, the impacts of this project on traffic compared to already existing traffic conditions in the area. So, it's really separating those out and designing this project to minimize those impacts as much as possible while still having a successful commercial development. See, what else you will know, as was mentioned by Mr. Will, is this intersection at Carl Ridge Road. You may be able to see, I will, if I can work this, zoom in a little bit further here. All right. What you can see here, what you can see is that in this, this intersection, we've got three westbound traffic lanes. For the eastbound, we've actually, we've got two traffic lanes. We've got a dedicated right turn lane and a through, combined through left turn lane, and this is going to be a signalized intersection. As was mentioned, the developer has agreed to pay the cost of this intersection. That is going to come into play at, in the annexation agreement, that the pavement is generally reimbursable from impact fees generated by this development, but the signal itself is not. So, that is going to be a cost carried by the developer and this development. All right. As was noted, if there was a right in, right out, that would have been paid by the developer, but as we've given, that is no longer associated with that project, it's a moot point. All right. Another thing that I wanted to point out with this development is that when you look at this development, you'll note that there are very large retention areas, stormwater retention areas here, again, here.
Push that up, would you please?
What was that?
Can you push that up to show those?
Oh, I'm sorry. I zoomed in. There we go. So, we're looking at this, this area here and this area here. So, again, of course, that is for stormwater detention, and another reason for that is that this is actually a comparably very low-density development. If you look at this development, when you compare the ratio of commercial square footage or requesting permitting for this development versus the square footage of the entire site, you've got about a 1 to 9 ratio. If you look at, for example, I will zoom out, all right, all right. If we look at the density ratio of, for example, this commercial development here, that's got about a 1 to, 1 to 5 ratio. If we look at the develop, this development right here, the commercial strip mall, I think that's Fairway Meat Market, that's got a 1 to 4 ratio. So, what I want to point out is that overall, this is a very low-density development, and a lot of that is specifically directed, it was designed that way, again, to minimize the traffic impact on the surrounding areas. All right, and then, let's see. So, finally, finally, with this amendment, we do have a motion to amend, I believe that's been handed out to you. That motion to amend, amend is mainly a symptom of the idea that this has been on the agenda, and it has been so long since the staff report was initially prepared to this point today. We're asking to remove point, 2.1.19, which requests the traffic study to be revised per LTU's comments, generally because those comments have been addressed. Next is to amend 2.1.18. That requires amendments to the site plan in accordance with LTU's comments to the traffic study. That is amended to say the January comments to the traffic study, as if they haven't been addressed by the June 2024 submitted traffic study, traffic study, again, that this is necessary because it has been so long since that staff report was prepared to today, that revised traffic study has been submitted, has been reviewed, comments have been addressed. And so, this motion to amend has been circulated to city departments, so they've had a chance to see it, and my understanding is that there's no objection, there's, my understanding is that there's support and no objection to this motion to amend. Yeah, so, with that, we ask you to support, we support these four associated applications, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dick?
Anne, would you pull back up the, the proposed layout of the, that you have? Is, in the lower right-hand corner, is that the hotel?
You're talking about right here?
Yes.
I believe so. Oh, this is a car wash.
Hotel's on those.
Hotel is right here? All right.
Okay. Well, both of them had canopies, and I wasn't sure which one. And then, for the large box door, there's been several concerned neighbors as to what that might be. Are you at liberty to say, has any contract been signed by Mr. Marsh?
No, there have been conversations and there have been interest. I, to my knowledge, there's no agreements right now on exactly what is going to go in there. I think in today's environment, it is hard to get any kind of firm commitment from a real tailor, from a developer, where you don't have, you don't have approvals for a site plan yet. So, I, we don't have any agreements as to what is in that site as of now.
Hi, Dick. Tim Gergen.
Hi, Tim.
We also have provisions in our use permit to turn that large box into retail, residential if necessary.
Residential?
Correct.
Okay.
We're all hoping and opting for a large commercial user, but as we know, the retail environment has changed a little bit with Amazon and online shopping, so we're still hopeful for that.
Okay, thank you.
Shelley, do you need addresses, or are we good with that? Just a procedural question.
Ten, ten.
We're good. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Sorry. Quick procedure. Anything else? Question-wise. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any testimony in a neutral capacity? Any testimony in opposition? Commissioners, do we have questions for the staff?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, first?
Brian, Bob may need to come up for this, but I'll ask you anyway, and that is if, if LTU is in agreement with the two motions that they are proposing.
Yes, we have, we have discussed those internally, both in planning and with LTU, and we're fine with those, the motion to amend.
So, those should be included as part of the use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, great question. Anyone else?
Yes. Just out of curiosity, maybe LTU, are you, were there any talks in a second roundabout instead of the light at Carl Ridge Road? Just curious. One-way, okay.
No, there was not.
Actually, I think that's a federal highway connector.
Anne?
Yeah.
There you go.
So, you'd have to go through the federal government.
Good reason why. Perfect. Nice job, Dick. Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Applicant rebuttal? Okay, great.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve annexation 24001.
Second, Edens.
Shelley?
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And I would move that we approve use permit 24001 with the applicant's most, amendment, motion for amendment.
Second, Edens.
Okay. Shelley?
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Approved.
And I would move that we approve use permit 24001 with the applicant's most, amendment, motion for amendment.
Second, Edens.
Okay. Shelley?
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Okay.
Scene done, I would move that we adjourn.
Second, Edens.
Okay, Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Ebert.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Fite.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
We adjourned.